Welcome to As Real As They Come Dallas. My name is Julia Brown.
I'm Susan Fletcher.
Jennifer Loding.
Mehmet Sean Chalik.
Delida Chalik.
And we are here talking about finally getting together after the coronavirus distancing. We would like to get together and talk about how we overcame all this hardships of being in this situation. And we have our Collin County Commissioner, Ms. Susan Fletcher. She will give us insight on her environment versus business owner. This beautiful establishment Turkish Cafe and Lounge. Sean Chalik, he'll give us his perspective on how things went in his business and what he had to do to handle all of that and make sure that his business stays afloat while everything else is closed. Well, Susan, what would you tell us how you see this whole situation? What government and your perspective on all of that?
You know, this is something that we've never faced before as a country. And I think it's been just a learning experience for me as a government official to make sure that you want to make sure that people are safe, but you also have to protect liberty. And that's the biggest part of this is how do you balance safety and liberty and making sure that businesses can keep going? And when this really started, I reached out to Sean and said, you know, hey, if it were me and I worked for you, I'd be trying to figure out before any of the lockdown happened, I said, you know, we've got to move tables apart so people feel comfortable to go out. And, you know, how do we, you know, start doing dinner for three or dinner for four? And so he implemented a lot of those things. I think his staff had already kind of told him the same thing.
We did, thank you.
But he worked very, very hard and tried to just make it to where he could protect jobs. I mean, at the end of all this, we need to go back to work. And so I was concerned about individuals and how do we sustain through this? And I was also concerned about how do we protect jobs so people have a job to go back to? And so I don't want to just delay the pain by helping the individual right now. I want to make sure that we can recover and fully recover. And so that has been a learning experience and we've all, we've never faced this before. And so when you say a novel virus, it's a new virus. And so there's much that's unknown and there's a lot of research that'll have to be done. It'll be 10 years before we know really all the implications and how people became infected and what these rates are. Everybody's just guessing right now. And, you know, what's the best way to treat it and all of those things. And so it's been insightful for me.
Yeah, it's definitely a guessing game and it's a fine line. Now, where do we draw this line? Because there are people that concerned about their safety, but then let's say I'm on the real estate side and my husband and I were both involved with a lot of investors. And then people that rent or people that own a home, they are protected if it's your homestead. But what do you do to people that own real estate and their renter is actually helping them to pay for the property that they own? How do we protect that class? And it's almost unfair to them that, okay, we're going to delay rents for two, three months, but their mortgage is still due because investment property is not recognized to be protected under that safe harbor law. So it's a very fine line, definitely. And what about you, Sean? What did you have to overcome?
Well, we had to overcome a lot of stuff on March 18th. One day, you know, Collin County first announced it about shutting down all the restaurants. The first thing we did is we had to have a meeting that all of our staff, they go and told them all of them to go file for unemployment.
I'm going to interrupt him here real quick because it wasn't Collin County that shut down. So that was a state mandate and Collin County never shut down business. And so there's a misconception there. And I think it's important for the viewers to understand that we never shut down any businesses. However, there was guidance that, you know, if you're sick, please don't go out and things like that.
Yeah.
But so anyway.
We did get a notice served from the city of Plano for all the businesses in this area that March 18th was the last day that we have to close the business. So I don't know if it was mandated by the government or the county or the city individually, but so we shut down the place and we were only open for takeout. Our business was not set up for takeout. We had few takeout here and there, but it's not even a fraction of our sales, our income. But what we learned from during this pandemic, we started to focus on the takeout, set up the business for that. It did create some revenue and we start to, you know, make sure the staff was coming in. It was hard to convince the staff who want to come out of work also. That was another dilemma that we had to deal with it. Yeah, you're open for takeout, but the thing is nobody want to work. Everybody's filing for TWC, getting money.
That's right.
And some of these people can't even make that money on the regular jobs, that the money they're making now. For instance, right now, we send full schedule to the entire staff, but we only get probably six, seven people back. Rest of them don't want to give up unemployment.
Right, right.
And anyway, but recently when, you know, the Governor Abbott announced that the businesses are going to be reopened with a 25% occupancy, we space out all our tables, as you can see. And we sanitize the entire patio with spraying it. And we sanitize our indoor dining, outdoor dining, the entire restaurant. So when the customer walk in, we have the fever, one of those laser fever measure. So we measure every customer fever. If they have high fever, we send them back. We don't let them in. And we pour hand sanitizer at the entrance. If not, we don't catch it at the entrance, the server bring to the table. And all the entire staff wear gloves and mask. Since we reopened the restaurant, the sales went up, I would say another 25, 30% based on only we used to be open for takeout. But I think the more that people get out, that right now, everybody's still scared they're staying at home. If this reopening doesn't cause another spray, you know, spreading this pandemic, I think next couple of weeks, people are going to get out more. And I think everything is, the economy is going to turn around and we'll go back to normal hopefully soon.
We all hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, we can take every precaution possible, but we all know, we're all humans, we only can be responsible for what we do personally because I witnessed number of people that quote unquote, "safe," wearing gloves, wearing masks, but then it's only a placebo effect in my opinion because then you see a person, she's sitting with a mask and it's under her nose. That is very... I was in my car washing this lady on the porch and she's obviously concerned about her safety, but if you are protecting yourself with a mask, it should be over your face. It shouldn't be under your chin. It shouldn't be because you touching it, you inoculating. We can inoculate ourselves with bacteria through eyes, any kind of like moist, I guess, surface of our body because you touch your nose, you touch this, you breathe in. And it's all needs to be to the T. And the main, and Jennifer will agree with me because Jennifer is a huge health buff. She will agree that taking care of your health in whole will help you protect yourself because if your immune system is strong, it will help you to overcome a lot of different viruses. And it's us citizens taking that particular precaution, wash your hands as much as you can, probably not all the time with antibacterial stuff because that will kill your natural environment on your body because we all carry bacteria that helps us to protect ourselves from all the viruses. And I don't believe that shutting down is really a huge answer to the problem because we still have people, essential employees. I'm considered to be a central employee in mortgage business because our business never stops. We go, 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 go. I mean, restaurants, people got to eat. That's essential. Then there are children that their meal, main meal was in school and that's how sad it is. We don't think about those kind of things. What do we do with those children? How do we stimulate that kind of environment? And it's a really, really multi-grained problem mopping in. And Ms. Susan, please tell us about Collin County Commissioner. What does your title hold within?
Well, I'm glad you asked. A lot of people don't know what a commissioner is and I will try to simplify that for you. A lot of people think it's a police commissioner or up in the Northeast, they have those. And so, you know, a county commissioner is, in California, they call them a county supervisor. It's a similar type of a position. So it is like the city council on the county level. So when you have a county judge that's elected at large, you know, they are over the whole county, elected at large, and then I'm elected in a precinct. So it's separated in sections and according to population. So some of the sizes of precincts, precinct four is actually the smallest. It's about 10% of the whole county. It's very densely packed and there's no unincorporated roads that run through there, no county roads. And so mine is about 25% of the county, I would say, and 25% from precinct three. And then precinct two, no, precinct two and myself are about 25%. And then precinct three is a large 40% of the county. So, but it's a lot of rural area. But we are like, a county commissioner is like a city council person on the county level. It's really the easiest way to explain that. County services are different than city services. We run the jail and judicial services, all of those things that, once a city has, if they arrest someone, they bring them to the county. And we, you know, process them from that point in the jail and through the court system and all of that. So it's just a different level of local government.
Sounds like y'all got a lot on your plate, that's for sure.
Oh, we do, we do, for sure. My job mainly as a county commissioner is budgeting and policy for the whole counties.
So what's inspired you to get into this?
I love to serve. I love to serve. You know, we had a great county commissioner before that. And when he decided to step out and run for a different job, then I decided I knew the issues and I was the right person to represent the people. And so I wanted to be that liaison to work with the cities. I'm very pro law enforcement, pro first responders and want to help in that area as well. And so I felt like, you know, you needed someone with that public policy experience to help with that. I have a background in commercial interior construction and design, so that's helped out and come in handy. But I love what I get to do. I love to work. So in fact, if you live in Collin County in precinct one, you're my boss. Right here, he's my boss. Delida's my boss. So if you, I don't know, do y'all live in Collin County?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. We're close enough.
I live in Collin County.
There you go. Well, you're my boss.
I'm in Denton.
I'm in a different precinct unfortunately. When I was voting, I was like, where is she?
Well, I'll tell you, you know, if you ever find an elected official, and I'm going to look straight at the camera, if you find an elected official that does not understand you are their boss, then you need to fire them.
Have that removed.
It's important to fire people that don't understand that they work for the people. That's really, really important, so.
Definitely. And earlier before we started the podcast, you mentioned something about Collin County allocating funds to stimulate and help people to overcome this whole situation right here. Could you elaborate on that?
So I'm happy to. There is a lot of money that Congress has appropriated, several trillion dollars that they have appropriated. It's all wrapped up in the CARES Act. You might have heard of the CARES Act. There's several different programs and there's the payment protection program where they did loans to small businesses through the Small Business Administration. Another portion is this CARES Act, C-A-R-E-S, and it's a Coronavirus Relief Act. And so once they passed that, they appropriated money to each state. And if you were a county or a city within that state that had more than 500,000 people in your county or in your city, then you were able to get funds directly from the federal government. So Collin County has just over a million people and so we were able to get our own distribution instead of having to go to the state to ask for funds. So yesterday at court, we actually worked on what are we going to do with this funding? And it's very important that we all understand it. It is only for COVID response. We cannot use it to take care of a budget shortfall or property taxes or anything else. It has to be a COVID response. And so we decided yesterday that we really needed some more testing in the county. And so we're going to work with some of our current contracts and try to get some more testing done. We needed to purchase PPE, which is personal protective equipment. We also are dedicating a large portion of that to the cities within Collin County, $50 million. And you have to realize that this money that has come to us has come because this is all of our federal taxes that we paid, that the federal government has reallocated back to us. So we're trying to infuse that into the economy in a way that is a COVID response. And so one of the other ways that we've done that has been for rent assistance and mortgage assistance through utilities assistance for people that have lost their jobs and are struggling during this time. You know, there is a real need out there. I heard a figure that 30,000 people in Collin County had lost their jobs. I have heard all kinds of numbers that really frighten me for the future. And so we've got to respond to, you know, this need that's out there. I believe we've got to do something for the businesses as well and we'll continue to focus on that. But right now, we are working on rental assistance, utilities assistance. We have four, they're called CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, that are four cities that receive those here in Collin County. They are going to administer this program for the whole county. So it doesn't matter if you live in Salina or one of those cities that doesn't participate in that. They are going to administer it for the whole county. And so they will look at this program and figure out how to help people that are really struggling to make those rent payments and those utility payments and mortgage payments because it's really important that we help people stay afloat during this time until we get that economy back.
It's very tough job within itself because Collin County is very densely populated. So speaking of 50 million and those figures sound big to an individual, but when you think about, when you think about county wise, it's like, it's barely anything to help to stimulate the economy of this particular area during this time. It's really almost non-existent.
It's a large amount of money that we have to be responsible with because ultimately it's the taxpayers' dollars. And so we want to recover from this effort. And so that's really what this is all about. You know, a lot of it's going to the cities and they have their own response. I mean, just think about a city and all of their, their first responders and they have to all have a mask and protective equipment. And think about the county and the jail and how do we protect people from, thank goodness, that we haven't had a COVID outbreak in our jail. I mean, I give the sheriff great credit for that and his staff because they have worked very hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
And it's very important too because a lot of people and you search social media and a lot of people will refer to that, well, if people have COVID and they don't want to do this self distance thing, then put them all in jail. I'm like, there are people in jail too.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, those people done wrong in their life, but these are people too. I mean, are they responsible? It's pretty much their immune system is already compromised within the environment that they are. I'm pretty sure they don't get health supplements with their breakfast. I mean, and killing them with the COVID, knowing that they already compromised, that's just unfair, I think, with itself also. And I'm very happy to know that these establishments also protected to make sure that people do get a chance to do right in their future and do.
And even, even the governor's orders, when we had, you know, stay at home or, you know, all these orders in place, those were intended, they were never intended to eradicate this virus. There was no way to contain a virus that was uncontainable. They were designed in order to slow the spread. We heard about flattening the curve. That means that we don't overwhelm the resources that we have in place with our first responders, with our doctors and our nurses and our hospitals and our ventilators. All those things were what we didn't want to overwhelm. Once those numbers exceed what we were able to treat, that was the goal, was to get underneath that threshold. And so I think we've done that and people have to get back to work. I mean, if people are very, you mentioned people that are worried about the virus and honestly, if you are one of those immunocompromised people or you are concerned about the virus or your age, you know, makes you more vulnerable, please take your own advice, stay home. Take your own advice. I don't know how else to say it, but you can do that. But there are people that need to work and we've got to allow commerce to come back. People are losing their health insurance, something they need desperately right now. They're losing it because they can't work. And so, you know, the suicide rates and the domestic violence and child abuse and the things that are happening because of the stay at home are also additional problems that we really have got to help out.
And what do you think next couple of months? Is there any plan in place? Is there any projection in place of what's happening?
You know, that's something that I don't get to decide. You know, the county judge is the emergency manager. I mentioned earlier that he's like the mayor of the county. He's the emergency manager for the county. He never did have a forced stay at home order unless you were sick. He said, stay at home. You're ordered to stay at home if you're sick. Other than that, you know, we wanted to be able to allow commerce to happen in a safe way. You know, if you can't do it in a safe way, you shouldn't be doing it. But I think every business owner is already an entrepreneur and you're thinking of ways that you can make this more safe. You want to be not only profitable, but you want to serve the community as well. And so I think those things are important. But, you know, projections, looking at the future, the governor's made some statements about how, you know, we can see how it goes if the rise of coronavirus, you know, slows down or doesn't. And, you know, he's got some navigating ways about doing that. But ultimately, I think the more testing we have, we're going to have more positive cases. I mean, that's just going to be the way that it is. It's a good thing to know where they are, but at the same time, you have to expect that more cases will be discovered just as we have more testing that's available.
And for it as being as new as it is, I'm pretty sure a lot of those testing numbers are pretty skewed also. Like I had mentioned, a friend of mine, she has her sister-in-law who is in Rhode Island and many of those cases get checked in with, you've got symptoms, you already have coronavirus, no test, no anything. And a lot of people read those results, including my family, like, oh my God, we just got 32 more cases and we were 1,200. What happened? And it's, it's a natural scare and definitely we are all together on this and we just have to figure out, instead of like blaming one side or the other, just being, okay, what can we do as a community to protect ourselves in whole? And Sean, what do you think of projection for your place? What do you have planned?
Well, we took all the necessary precautions and measures to protect our staff and to protect the customers. But as I said, right now, it's still too new. I think this was a very smart way to do with 25% occupancy and to see where we are. Hopefully if it doesn't increase and we open another 50%, it's good. I mean, right now, as I said, it's a, it's a better, before we had people would come at the door, we would send them back. But now, you know, people used to come here anyway to get the pickup. But now they have the chance to sit on this huge gigantic patio outdoor and nobody come close to them, you know, 10 feet, 20 feet away and they can enjoy the dinner here. Still be, you know, precautious, have the social distancing. I want to ask Delida and Delida can tell you a little bit about, you know, when customers come in and when they're leaving Turkish Cafe, what kind of, you know, sanitizing that our staff and we do. So go ahead, Delida.
Firstly, we go ahead and measure their fever.
When they walk in?
When they walk in. A second precaution that we do take is that all of our staff do have to wear masks and gloves at all times and be sure to give hand sanitizer when clients walk in through the door. And when they leave, I feel that, you know, while they're here, we do sanitize the tables where they sleep, everywhere in the restaurant. We have hand sanitizer available to them at all times. Our software is gloves. There's no touching involved. So we're doing our best to protect all customers that walk in through the door.
And we did remove all the linen on the table so they can sanitize.
That's good.
After everyone leaves. I know they don't look that great, but it's better than.
It's authentic.
Exactly.
Rustic and authentic.
But what about, since we are on the subject, what about you as a student? How did you have to adjust to the coronavirus situation?
Personally, it was pretty easy being in the college level. We already had most of our stuff digitally. We were learning online mostly. I think the biggest role that it played in is the exams. Everything, no matter what the professors did, we always had access to Google. If I had a question, I can just look it up. But in reality, you know, when I'm preparing for the CPA, I'm not going to have that resource. And I think it takes a big chunk away from me, from learning and understanding the material. Personally, I'm just going through it and like every other student, looking up the answers on Google. And I think before I thought it was good. Now I'm thinking it's a huge loss and, you know, building those friendships, building network. This is a critical time and I think I feel like it's been taking away from me.
I'm definitely a student that learns in the classroom.
Yes.
And one of those students that never shuts up. I'm like, what about this professor? What about that? And I learned through asking questions. So to me, learning through computer would have been a nightmare. I'm pretty sure there are people that...
It's not as bad, I would say.
Yeah.
And it's not as bad. I, my only concern is there's no, there's no one on top of you to tell you, do it right now or you're going to fail an exam.
You basically have to motivate yourself.
Yes.
To get up and be like, I have this on my plate right now. Wow. Well, definitely. Well, thank you so much.
I want to hear what's going on.
I'm just observing every young son.
Honestly, once you said that, you know, just worrying about the immune system and all of that, I think there's probably a lot that we have to learn still. And there's a lot we've all learned through this, but I want to hear.
Well, I mean, my take on the whole thing is that I feel like we, whole body health is something that we do day in and day out. So my whole thing with this, or I guess take on this Corona thing is, yes, I do think we have to do things to say, you know, have precautions out there because I believe 90% of the people don't really know what they can do. And so I think there's power in knowing in yourself that you have the ability to control your health because I think a lot of times we think as individuals that if a virus comes to us, we have no choice whether that virus grabs onto us and attacks us. We have no control of that. When in reality, to some extent, we do, we do. And we have that by the food choices that we make every day, the lifestyle. And I talk about this all the time and what I do with my coaching is that, you know, health is not just the food you put in your mouth, but it's everything you do in your life, day in and day out. It's the books you read, the people you're in contact with, the circle you hang around, all the things that play in this. And so for me, this whole subject with Corona, it's why I've been just listening, observing because the whole subject for me has been touchy. You know, I have the mindset that I don't believe anybody needs to tell me how to live my life, you know, that I take care of myself every day, day in and day out. And, you know, I wish that I could share everything I know with everybody. Not everybody's open to that. But I do think we have power in our, in our health and viruses do, I feel they do not thrive where they are not welcome. And if you look at, you know, I don't know everything, but I know if we look at a lot of the demographics and where people are and where these viruses are really populating, you see patterns, you start to see patterns. And interestingly enough, when this first went out, I had put a post on Facebook about, and I mentioned this to you guys beforehand, that if we wanted to get ahead of this virus, we needed to reduce sugar in the diet. Well, you know, I got blasted, I got trolled for it on my post and I was fine with that. I'm going to take the heat for that. But, you know, as I told you, I did put a nerve condition into remission after four years of struggling with that by reducing sugar in my diet.
That's amazing.
I did a ketogenic diet for 22 months and got off all my meds. So I believe wholeheartedly in the, the impact that sugar has on the body itself. And so, yeah, and so I said that and I got trolled for it. But what's so funny about all of that, now fast forward, let's go forward. Couple of weeks ago, I opened up the news and they start talking about pre-existing conditions, obesity and all these things that are tied together. And I'm like, okay, well, a lot of these things are not light bulb moments. Like I've known these things. I've known these. Hello. You know, like I've been saying this, you know, and they're, and they're looking at that. So it's been a very tough thing for me, but I get where, you know, people are saying we need to try to flatten the curve and help people. But at the same time, I agree with you a hundred percent that we need to have balance because my thing is this, your job is essential. Any job that pays for somebody to put food on their table, to me, is essential. I don't care whether you... I don't care whether you own a bowling alley, a movie theater, or your Turkish restaurant. If you have to put food on your table to feed your family, who has the right to determine what's essential and what's not essential?
Right.
You know? We're all essential. We're paying to feed our families at the end of the day, so.
I agree with you. I think every business should take the precautions, that whether it's a restaurant or it's a nail salon, or they can all take the measurement. They can, they can all be open to public.
It's difficult, you know, when you look at, and you think about history and you think about our forefathers, people that wrote the Constitution, that, that fought in our American Revolution, that bled and died to give us liberty. And people are, you know, they gave up their lives and their fortunes and their sacred honor and all these things, so that we could have this great experiment of America. And then our freedom is shut down because of a virus that, I, I get it. If, if people are sick, stay home. You know, I think just, just what's going on in the medical world and the, the controversy over this hydroxychloroquine. I have a good friend that's a doctor, I will not name the person's name, but, but it, just hearing of, of the tyranny within the medical community, you know, people that are threatened if they prescribe this medicine, when it's been proven to help. I mean, why is this happening? And, and, and there's a lot of questions that, that we all have, and, and I can't tell you all the answers, but I have a lot of questions. And, and I'm very concerned, and, and if we don't get people back to work, and there's gotta be a mechanism to do that, if it's antibody testing, if it's, you know, regular testing, whatever it is, we've gotta get people back to work. And so I applaud you and your business for making the changes that you needed to make in order to, to stay afloat. And, and, and this is like home to me, I love coming here, so.
Thank you, Susan.
I'm so glad.
Giving less sadness.
Oh, yeah. Today's like one of the first days we feel normal, like we get to come back to home, you know? This is great, so, yeah.
Thank you all for being here.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us. And fear is definitely a huge magnet to anything. If you look at the patterns of your life, what you fear the most usually finds you. So letting go of fear, letting go of that and just living your life, enjoying this great gift given to us by God and just take your personal responsibility for your actions. Wash your hands.
Yes.
Bathroom, no bathroom.
Basically, common sense.
Common sense.
Just common sense.
Not so common.
Do the things you should have been doing already.
Yeah, it's good.
Well, I definitely want to thank everyone for being on the podcast. Thank you for giving your...
Thank you, Yulia.
Angle of view on this. And thank you, our viewers, for watching us. Share, like, dislike, comment. We are more than happy to see all of your comments. Thank you. It's really calm Dallas.